Alright, well, good morning and welcome to Committee of the Whole for the Cottontown Regional District. Today is April the twenty fourth, twenty twenty four, and I'd like to acknowledge that the meeting is taking place on the traditional territory of Long Island. Directors, you have the agenda in front of you, and in just a moment, I will call for a motion to approve the agenda. But just to outline at the beginning that we're going to try a slightly different process for today, based on the information we've received about making meetings go more efficiently. So when we get to reports and new business, I'm going to ask directors if they have questions of clarification prior to a resolution being put on the table. So we're going to try this process and see how it works, and we'll take everything from there. So could I please have a motion to approve the agenda? Thank, oh, and I need to say sorry before calling for that motion, that item nine point two has been postponed until Committee of the Whole in May. Okay, so as amended, a motion to approve the agenda, please, Director.
You can postpone it at the time we get to that point.
Okay, alright, well, I just wanted to-
Recording in progress.
That we would postpone it. Director Elliott.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Elliott and Lennox. Discussion, CEO.
Riskful amendment.
Fair enough.
The Chair's one, what? Is there further discussion? Seeing no hands, all in favor? Any opposed? Hearing. Adoption of minutes of March the twenty sixth, are there any errors or omissions? Do you know how to motion to approve? Director Gisborne, Director Lennox, any discussion?
March twenty eighth.
Yes.
I believe you said twenty sixth, so.
Sorry, March twenty eighth, alright. Any further discussion? Seeing no hands, all in favor? Any opposed? Hearing. There are no delegations and inquiries, no unfinished business, and we have four items of correspondence. Is there any business arising from these items, Director Lennox?
Yes, six point one, please.
Six point one, okay, will become item seven point one. Okay, Director Gisborne?
Six point three and six point two.
Six point two and six point three will become seven point two and seven point three. Alright, anything else? Seeing none, we are now on to business arising, seven point one. Director Lennox.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Just noticed through this correspondence some dates that we might not have the most up-to-date information. I was wondering through the CAO or Chair, there was a forum for feedback regarding regional districts in regards to this correspondence. Is there any updates from?
Thank you, Director Lennox, very good question, so we will call on Mr. Tom's, our emergency services manager, so, Mr. Tom's.
Yeah, through the Chair, I believe the Director is referencing some feedback the Fire Commissioner was looking for last month. Realistically, they were looking for challenges faced with current inspections and investigations and services we just don't provide. So really, there was minimal in that regard. But just to highlight that this is a positive correspondence response back from the correspondence the Board sent to the Minister and to the Fire Commissioner. But we're still waiting, as it says, really, to see later this spring. You know, what we're really hoping to see is that regional districts will not be looking to have to do the regular system of inspections, the way that municipalities are required, and just exactly how the province is going to support that, because there is a lot of wording around that and our understanding through the working group that does have regional district support and involvement, that that's what's coming. Again, we're just waiting to see the drafts, that we've not seen yet.
Thank you for your answer, just supplemental, I think it's interesting for the Directors and staff to note, it's noted within that the Lakeland Coroner's Report was part of the decision-making for the changes in the Act. The sawmill explosions and the, I would see, perceived lack of inspections, so paying attention to the subject that should be, could be viewed as some potential downloading to local government. So this, we should be paying attention to that one, thank you.
Thank you, Director Lennox. On this item, is there anything further on seven point one, Director Gisborne?
Yes, I believe this was brought up at the Electoral Area Directors Forum, I'm seeing notes. For everyone that wasn't there, the concern came up of, is this going to be downloaded onto regional districts? And at that session, the question was posed, and a lot of regional districts don't have the service capability to do the inspections. And what we were informed at that session, if there's a complaint, if there's a concern, they can contact the regional district, and we essentially pass that information on to the province, and then they'll take on the responsibility of the inspection. And I believe that was Al Richmond that clarified that at that session, and later on, speaking to some members of the working group, I wanted to express my thanks to our CAO, because apparently he's been very active on this file and has been asking some very good questions from what I heard from members of the working group. So I just wanted to say thank you to our CAO for the work he's been doing on this.
Thank you, Director Gisborne. Still on seven point one, Director Elliott.
So, what Director Gisborne has said has raised a question for me. If the tension is not downloading to the regional district, then why would first point of contact be the regional district, only to forward the law? Why would first point of contact not be a provincial designated contact? That's my question. Does anyone, has anyone had any feedback on that?
Director Gisborne? We're not getting into a-
No, just, these guys went to a session that I missed.
Yeah, well, because it was Electoral Area Directors, and that was clarified right before I actually got to the mic to speak. When I got to the mic, my question was, so are you asking regional districts to essentially be front-counter B.C.? Like, if the province is going to do the inspection, the Fire Commissioner's Office is going to do the inspection, and we're just taking the information, handing it on, like, why are we doing this? But the province didn't really seem to have much of an answer, but I think our CAO does, so.
Through the Chair. There are some RDs that have full-blown fire service programs. And to stay consistent, that is why they're going through this process. Those that don't have full-blown systems will just use this contact, if you will. But we won't be obliged or have any obligations in having to actually go out and perform any of the work.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, alright, that finishes off seven point one. So we're now on to seven point three, regarding active transportation, Director Gisborne, you raised it.
Yeah, I actually would like to talk about the seven point three before we get to seven point two, because I kind of see them being related.
Okay, are we in agreement that we can talk about seven point three first? Alright, seeing no, that's, alright, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, correspondent seven point three deals with a number of issues. The first one is dangerous dogs, I know this has come up in the past. The Livestock Act states, quote, "A person may kill a dog if the person finds the dog, A, running at large, and B, attacking or viciously pursuing livestock." I asked around in my neck of the woods out in Area B about this incident. Of course, there's been several incidences, and as I was informed, through being informed from someone else, that apparently the dogs have been destroyed in this incident. And that then leads me to, you know, the question and the concern around public education. I know the regional district, we are doing public education on, you know, active transportation sometimes, or, you know, our trails use policy, or illegal dumping. And now that we're moving from spring into summer, I'm wondering, would there be anything within our plans or in our budget to inform the public for, like, proper trails use? And I believe that we have a regional trails master plan, and I'm wondering how that regional trails master plan directs such activity, so it's kind of more of a question for our CAO to be informing the public around, you know, proper respectful trail use, because we're getting more and more folks, so.
And we do have a monthly, you know, add-in Cottontown Living Magazine, so that may be an appropriate venue for that, CAO.
Through the Chair. As you know, we do not have any dog bylaws. And the only trails, if you will, that we actually maintain on a regular basis are beach accesses and a few on Texada Island. And those ones on Texada Island, if I'm not mistaken, are being looked after by a volunteer group, for the better part. So, we might be able to put something in under that service. But to actually talk about what the bomb squad maintains and everything else, I think we're overstepping our boundaries.
Okay, well, I have a speaker, so it's Director Dowd is next, followed by Director Elliott.
I just wanted to inject a note of caution that I got from going to the MIA annual seminar a couple of weeks ago. One of those was around trails, there was a lot of discussion about trails that weren't being maintained by regional districts, because there were so many forest fires in their area that all the staff had to concentrate on emergency preparedness and emergency restoration, and didn't have time to do the other inspections. And issues came up about liability with trails, and the liability for trails that had signs on them that somebody might find to be insufficient. And there was quite a discussion at a couple of the forums on what's appropriate signage for trails, and who maintains them, and what responsibilities show up when you put up a sign. So before we start printing up signs to put up everywhere, we should be careful about understanding if we're taking liability for anybody who doesn't see that sign or doesn't understand it, or goes down a trail that's not properly maintained somehow. I just want to say, it's, you know, it sounds like a good idea to just bang up some signs, but it might be some negative consequences.
CEO?
I'll get in the right line, or order. I'll get in the right order.
Then I have Director Elliott.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, CEO. So what I was kind of hearing was maybe a need to let folks know whose jurisdiction is, and which rules apply, and all of these other kings, I don't think it's a sign thing. I think it might be working with our partners through tourism or other folks who man, who are cycling clubs or what have you, to put out more information. And it might be not a service we're trying to do, but rather just general communication, because at the time of year, for example, people might not know about the livestock law, that their dogs could be in danger, so they're letting them run loose during, in agricultural areas. Like, dog owners might want to know that. And so I'm just wondering if there's a way we can facilitate through our partners who speak to the folks who use the trails about the various jurisdictions and rules that might be applying out there, even though they're not ours, to make it friendlier for the people who live there.
No, good point, now, CAO is next on the speaker list, and I have Director Lennox.
Two points I want to make, Chair. First one, I wanted to just write on the coattails of Director Dowd, remind everybody of that incident that occurred a few years ago in Revelstoke, where they thought they had the appropriate signage to forewarn people not to swim out to a larger island. And at the end of the day, they were found to be negligible, because I believe it was a firefighter, of all things, swam out there, dove off, and injured himself. So, signs aren't always the answer, so I concur with Director Dowd. If we get into that business, we better be prepared to amp it up and ramp it up every year. The other point I wanted to make is, I believe this conversation is not time-sensitive, so I would suggest or recommend that if Director Gisborne has some thoughts in mind, to touch base with staff during the week, and we can then figure out what we're really trying to land on. Because this is deeper, we've got to figure out if we've got appropriate service, how we want to go about it, work plans, budget, everything, so we're not going to get that discussed and resolved in two minutes here.
Thank you very much, CEO. Director Lennox.
Yeah, thanks, Chair, just to add to the discussion, I think what we're seeing here in the letters identified what the particular incident that happened, or really the last paragraph, is about building awareness and education. And so, the many stakeholders in this, in our area are involved with this, so O-Rug and others, the Horse Council, B.C., these are all great things, and what they're saying is an opportunity to speak. So I would encourage, if you're listening, please come to us and speak, because then we can help to build that awareness and education. And of course, we support those types of efforts, but we're, that's not really our business, right? So, my comments.
Thank you, Director Lennox, and then, of course, there's only the trails that we're responsible for. You know, a lot of the trails in the back country, we are not the owner of, so. Okay, that's finished for round one. Director Gisborne?
Okay.
What was on this, I hope?
Yeah, thank you very much. Yeah, the signage issue is not an easy one, because as the CAO pointed out, we don't own a lot of these trails in the community, they're talking about the access to West Lake, which is Brookfield's private property. A lot of folks, they think they can have whatever they want, but there's a lot of private property that they can't just go and use. And of course, we can't just, you know, impose our will on people's private property. So my point, I'll take the CAO's advice, reach out to staff about, you know, how can we just inform the public about, you know, essentially the rules of using trails that aren't regional districts? Because, you know, there's the Master Trails Plan, which covers all kinds of backcountry trails that, of course, aren't on our land. So, yeah, getting into the whole sign issue is a separate thing. The reason I wanted to kind of break these down is there's also a regional district sign up by the West Lake Access, so when people first go up there, there's actually a regional district sign sitting there. But that's for illegal dumping, that's not for trails access. And then the very last point actually ties into seven point two, so I can then, I can wait until that one, if that makes sense.
Are we finished on seven point three? Okay, I guess we are, seeing no hands, so we'll go to seven point two, which is regarding active transportation. Director Gisborne?
Thank you, the reason I pulled this one, and I think it ties into seven point three, is the previous letter was about, you know, using horses to go up to West Lake. Well, they're using the Brookfield pole line to get up there. So I agree with Ari Dobbin on this, about the Brookfield Power Pole Line, I think is a great alternative for active transportation in our community, I know it's not the route next to the highway, but it also brought up something very important, that in our community, because we're a lot more rural, we have a lot of folks using active transportation on horses. So we have a very healthy and vibrant equestrian community, and I'm wondering that when we do take a look into, like, the segregated active transportation corridor, that we also take into account, you know, our horse riders. Because, you know, I'm seeing more and more of them out in the rural areas, and I'm also then seeing, you know, the Brookfield Access, and going, well, there's already an active transportation corridor, but it's just not really official. It's quite often, you know, big thanks to Brookfield for their help and support of just allowing the public access. Yeah, that's why, when I saw the correspondence related to equestrian use going up to West Lake, and now this one about using Brookfield's power access for active transportation, it's like, well, like, they kind of already are, it's just not really up to a, you know, regional district standard. So I'm just wondering if our staff will be taking those items into consideration when they come up with the staff report around this active transportation, which I believe that we directed them to take a look into in the last couple of months, I don't remember which meeting it was. But taking into account the access for Brookfield's power, which of course would be a special agreement with them, because it's not our land, and also the equestrian activities, which people do use to get around the community, so. I'm just wondering if our staff are taking that in all into consideration.
Okay, thank you, Director Gisborne. CEO?
Through the Chair, I can't speak, whoever the author of that report may be, but I'm sure they're going to rack their brain to encompass all types that they can think of. And I'm forbid they put a report before you that doesn't include them all, you can certainly fire it now for furtherance.
Thank you. Oh, we are, Ms. Roden.
Ms. Roden, welcome.
I just wanted to, through the Chair, I just wanted to make the committee aware or remind the committee that the regional transportation plan that was completed some years ago does identify the pole line as an alternate active transportation route in the long term.
Thank you, Ms. Roden.
Director Elliott?
I'll put myself on the speaker list.
Thank you, mine's just a very short point. A long time ago, when I used to work for the Forest Service in Smithers, we would have active transportation days, and I would ride my horse to work. And the compound where all the vehicles were kept, I was allowed to put my horse in there and set it up for the day while I was at work. And my point is, you know, and it was a funny anecdotal thing, but my point was, is that in order for active transportation to work, the places you're going have to be set up to accommodate your active transportation mode. And, you know, horses are difficult, because usually you can't leave your horse anywhere. But for bikes or other modes of active transportation, if you can't safely lock them or put them somewhere when you get there where they're not in danger, then it becomes less useful. And so, the planning part of it would be if people can find a way to bring their active transportation to where they're going, once they get there, there's a place to house them.
Thank you, Director Elliott, and my comment, very brief, is just that pole lines make a lot of sense, because the poles are within the road allowance. And so it makes sense to, whatever planning takes place, that that be a factor. And it makes, you know, looking at active transportation on Texada, that was certainly an area that people identified as a possibility of being, you know, close to the pole line. Director Lennox?
Yeah, thanks, just briefly, Chair, I agree with the other Director's comments. What resonates for me within this letter is cyclists, but I can scratch that out, and pretty much anybody outside of a car don't feel safe on these highways, whether it's active transportation, horses, bikes, or otherwise. And so that resonates with me, because a lot of people come to me with that same issue, so I support any effort to improve.
Thank you, Director Lennox. Okay, is there anything else on seven point two? Seeing no hands, then, we can move on to reports, eight point one. And this is where we're going to take five minutes prior to the moving of the motion, or less if necessary, if there's no question. And I, could I ask our staff to put the timer on, so that we're aware of the five minutes that's transpiring? And I will ask this at the start of the items that are remaining on our agenda. So item eight point one, does anyone have a question before we have a motion? And this is a question of clarification, and this is not an opportunity for commenting or debating. So, Director Dowd.
I'm just curious about who is going to enforce the building code if this passes, and the accessibility. I think maybe the accessibility requirements might be a little more complicated than the actual building code part of it. So, just wondering who is going to make sure that all that's happening.
CEO?
Through the Chair, I'm going to refer this to, go on through.
Debra?
Through the Chair, building would have to be designed by an engineer, so it would be the engineering intelligence that would determine the design of the building, and the accessibility requirements.
Thank you, and I see your question?
Yep.
Okay, I see Director Lennox, Director Gisborne?
Yeah, oh, sorry, I was scratching my ear. It's not a signal. Thank you, Chair, I'm just looking at the report, I'm not sure where this is on the island, maybe Director Falk can educate me where this is, I see the map, is this anywhere near the fire hall? We had a good tour last summer, but I'm just not sure where this is.
Thank you, Director Falk.
I can answer that, so if you walked up the road at the top of the hill where the market is, I think I was maybe with you, I can't remember, we pointed out there's a market and an art center, and then this parking lot over which we have a license of occupation, it's about a third of the way to the fire hall, that's where it is. So it'll be right in between where the market is, and because it's set back, it'll be set back in the, in the bit, so.
Thanks, that helps a lot.
Okay, thanks, any other questions? Like Director Elliott?
Thank you, so does the regional district have a service that fits into, once we have to take it over? And then, did, and also, second question, did we have plans for what we've planned to put on that land that we are changing as a result of this request? Or is it, or was there no plan for that land at all?
CEO, to Mr. Debra?
Through the Chair, we had no plans for the land that was there. And forgive me, Director Elliott, I don't remember your first question.
Oh, so the, it seems like there was, maintenance would be the responsibility of the regional district. So are we creating a service or requiring anything to be done?
There is an existing service, it is a ski-dee recreation, it also controls the properties that's there already, which is the Arts.
Me, I am seeing no further hands for questions, so I would entertain a motion for eight point one.
Don't move, I'll move the recommendation.
Thank you, Director Gisborne, you're seconding? Director Gisborne, you're seconding?
Yes, sir, sorry.
Suspicion, Director Falk?
Thank you, Chair. I was really glad to see this had a very high turnout and a high support, because that makes it a lot easier for me, and I think it's clear what the community wants, I appreciate the effort staff took to get those responses. And we, you know, I think twenty-five percent of the population responding is a pretty good turnout, and that's of the total population, not, not, not just adults. And to have ninety-four percent in favor is a pretty clear what people want. So I think the stipulations are reasonable, you know, and I think, you know, in principle, all buildings need to be to be busy building code, it really gets to, you know, is that being enforced and checked? But I mean, in theory or in law, actually, this comes up on the ski-dee, do I have to build, does building code apply on the ski-dee? Well, of course it does, it applies everywhere in the province, it's just whether it's being enforced. So that, that is a bit of a question, but I think it's very reasonable, it's a regional district property, it's called the Legion Lot, it used to be owned by the Legion and the regional district took ownership some time ago. And I think the, you know, the, and from the staff report, you know, I think it's really clear, it says the Arts Council submitted a strong plan, the project has broad community support, and it has low financial risk to the regional district. So I see no reason to not go forward with this, thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much, Director Falk, just to add that if it's as successful as the one on Texada that was created in the elementary school, Texada Ceramic and Sculpture Studio, I know it'll be really well-used, it's a great activity, especially during winter months, so. Any other comments? Seeing no hands, oh, Director Elliott?
I'm generally in support of doing what the community wants, so that's, that's all good. I just was a little bit, the financial impact we're talking about is, is none. And I know that when we have assets, we are supposed to account for them and plan for the future, and possibly put stuff in reserves for that purpose. And so that would likely have, you know, a minimum impact to taxation. And I thought that that was something we should share while approving this.
Thank you, Director Elliott. Seeing no further hands, we will vote on recommendation for eight point one, all in favor? Any opposed? Hearing your analysis. Eight point two, Texada Community Hall Tables, does anyone have a question prior to this recommendation? I do not have a question, I'm quite satisfied, so.
I'll move the motion.
I'll second.
Commander, Director Gisborne, discussion? Seeing no hands, all in favor? Any opposed?
That was a close one.
They're really controversial.
I got really confused by that one.
Well, next time you're on Texada, I'll get you to lift one of the old hips. Oh my God, okay, eight point three, the Cemetery Regulation Amendment, and this is for a ninety-day on the interim period of remains. So are there any questions about this item? The CEO?
May I ask the author of the report if he would entertain injecting, I think after the date of the bylaw, meaning twenty twenty four, regarding urn vaults? Just to give some clarity and description to the proposed recommendation. Just to give some clarity and description to the proposed recommendation. I think that would work.
Urn vaults. And was that what you guys moved, Director Brande?
Yep.
Yep. And you had a question to Director Gisborne? All right, that's good.
Still a question period, Ellen?
No, he moved the motion.
No, I was the last one. We're still.
Sorry. Okay, all right. Question, but sorry. Okay, and Mr. Devereaux has answered that question. So other questions, Director Lennox?
Just a quick question, because my curiosity got the better of me. Maybe staff could answer the significant difference in lot fees from the Powell River Cemetery versus Texada. I have some ideas. I'm just wondering why the significant difference.
Mr. Devereaux?
I do not know the answer to that question.
Oh, I stumped you? Just, I just saw quite a, quite a difference and I thought I'd ask.
Well, it's certainly historical and.
I'm sure there's a good reason.
Well, it's a lot smaller. CEO?
I would have to assume there would be a poor economic development type of.
It's not a growth industry.
Okay, Director Elliott?
So I recall we had a similar issue about making sure there was everything was in a box before they were buried. And I remember and we had that before our, our, so is this a follow-up from that then? Or is it something completely separate?
I think it would be separate, but.
Through the chair, this, this allows us to do it by putting it into the bylaw. So the board has already approved the, the adding of the cremated remains urn vault.
Okay.
This puts it in the bylaw so that we can charge for the money for it.
So it's implementing a previous decision?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
That's what I was trying to ask.
All right. I'm not seeing any further hands for questions. So is there a mover for Director Brander? Thank you. All right. Discussion on the recommendation before. No hands, all in favor? Any opposed? Carry to unanimous. Okay, so that brings us to eight point four. The grant applications. Are there questions about this recommendation before we get into a motion? I'm seeing no hands. I'd entertain a recommendation then. Director Brander, thank you. Director Gisborne, you're moving the recommendation.
Yes.
All right, discussion. Director Lennox?
I see the grant is up to twenty-five thousand dollars and I see the objectives. I mean, does staff think that this will be sufficient? Or are we looking at, you know, any, you know, is it going to meet the, the bill, I guess, for the intention?
Dale?
Through the chair. In Michelle Jones's absence, I can only say that we'll probably try to optimize what we can ask for in this grant application. And bailing, well, hopefully we do get it. And after that, we will have to resolve ourselves to figuring out how this is getting into the grand scheme of things as far as cost pressures and easing some of those pressures. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Gisborne.
Uh, yeah, um, two questions. I should have asked them during question period. Apologies. Uh, one, do we have like a, an expected completion date for when we can get out of this stuffy room and go up to the, the new one? First question.
CEO?
Through the chair, through the chair. I believe the committee is pushing for substantial completion in June.
Wonderful. And I presume it's going to have a bit more space in this room. And then my second question is, you know, with all the existing other changes, what's going to be the option for like being able to open some windows and get some fresh air in the room? Because I know there's been some concern about. Well, not just AC, but also being like in the recycle air. Uh, because when I was down at AVICC, our big meeting hall was all indoors. And one of the things that directors and municipal councillors kept saying was like, you know, it's beautiful sunny day and we're stuck in this dark room and we can't even see natural light. And, you know, we tell our, we tell our children not to do that. So I'm just wondering, you know, natural light for our, our new office space. Is it going to have windows or completely isolated?
We'll call on Mr. Devereaux for his list of amendments.
Through the chair, the new room is completely in the interior of the building. So there are no exterior windows. However, it is an enormous skylight. It brings in natural light to the room. And we will have heat pump type operation so that it will be one or.
Okay. That's halfway there. I'm just also concerned about recirculated air because of course, after AVICC, a lot of folks came back ill. Challenge when you're.
And it's hard to, you know, do everything when you have a, you know, defined space. So no, I'm not seeing any further hands for questions. Is there a mover for this recommendation? Director Gisborne? Well, we already got that. Okay, we're on.
Yes, sorry.
I'm getting to this whole new process myself. All right. Anything further on eight point four? Seeing no hands, all in favor? Any opposed? Carry to unanimous. Okay, we're on to new business, item nine point one. This is referred from Finance Committee earlier this month. Are there questions regarding this recommendation? Director Gisborne?
Yeah, because we got five minutes for questions. We've got a letter here that was given to us by our CEO from George Paul. Talking about, you know, maybe not having a board appointed member, but maybe having a liaison. So I'm wondering, you know, we can either postpone it or we could even amend the motion that's on the agenda to read now, that the board support offering a director or liaison appointment. And then this kind of leaves it open-ended, or we can do the option of just postpone it until next month. Because I figured if we offered both, because we still. I'm just wondering, my question is, what would like? Both options would work?
CEO?
Through the chair. I, I think you should actually postpone this. Because for lack of a better term, you're, and you mentioned it earlier. I'm going to use my words. You're hoarding in on their society. We don't even know if there is a society that's in good standing yet. But we haven't been officially asked by them to participate in their organization. And the email specifically says that the chair or the president agrees, but he can't speak for the board. They have a meeting. And I think we, you know, should honor their and respect that board to come up with the decision and either invite us in or decline the offer that we extend them at the meeting. Yeah, that said, I think the best route is to honor that and just postpone until we get their official invite or decline of our offer.
Thank you. Do we need a, a motion to postpone?
We'll move to postpone. The next to the may committee of the whole.
May committee of the whole. Director Brander is seconding that. He's in session. Okay, Director Elliott, then Director Gisborne.
Thank you, Chair. So I think this is a good motion. I do think we need some general practices for how we receive the idea to become a liaison or appoint a liaison. And I do think that the CAO is quite correct that it should be initiated from the group that would like to have the liaison and they should have a proper board decision about that in requesting that of us. And so I don't think we should be willy-nilly offering liaisons, but rather providing organizations with the information that if, if their organization thought they needed one, they should ask us with a proper decision of their board. And so I, I generally speaking, think that's a better way to go. So I think this is a good motion.
Okay, thank you, Director Gisborne.
Yeah, I'm fine with postponing it. But there's a couple of things I'd like to clarify. At our Finance Committee, the Regional Board did not offer. The motion that we're postponing reads that the board support offering a director appointment. So the board hasn't officially offered a position yet. Even if this motion wasn't postponed and we passed it today, the board still hasn't offered the position because we're just committee level. Once it goes before the board, then it becomes an official offer. So I don't see us, even if we were to say, okay, let's not postpone. We're not actually really interjecting and we're not saying we're going to appoint someone to this. We're just saying, hey, we're going to offer a director's position to come over and, and take a look. Now, the reason why I think we, when we do get to this item next month, that it's important to look at offering this position is because there's a number of nonprofit societies that we do appointments for just because it's good communications. There's a power verse is one. The Historical Museum and Archives Society is actually being paid for by a specific standalone Regional District Service. So what we're talking about here is a Regional District Service that is being delivered by the society. And I think that it is imperative that the board has a good understanding of what's going on over there because that's our taxpayers' dollars that is being implemented by the society and maybe the society says, hey, we don't want someone at your board, like at our table, but at the same time, you know, we need to know kind of what's going on with our money. And there, there has been some confusion there. And this is where good communication can usually help smooth things over and, and help our board then understand where our money's going. Because there's some things where it's like, okay, we don't need to get involved. And then things where it's like, you know, we, we should have an understanding of what's going on over there. That's because it's service delivery.
Thank you, Director Gisborne. Director Falk?
Uh, thank you, Chair. I'd just like to follow up on some comments that Director Elliott said, which I concur with. I've been on a lot of different societies and I think we want to have a, a, a a good process to do this. I totally get the intent and I hear the, you know, the issues raised by Director Gisborne, and I, I don't disagree with them, but I think societies operate in their own way. And I think we want to be careful when we're seeing, being seen to, to be on the, you know, kind of the push side as opposed to the pull side. So I think providing a way to, to ensure that societies that we're involved with, like this one, have a clear mechanism to offer us. And they've heard, they've heard that we're interested or that we've been discussing it, but that they have, that it's up to them to ask and that there's a mechanism. And then I also agree with this idea of if it's going to be a liaison versus a, you know, not, you know, voting board member versus non-voting board member, that that's kind of clear. If we have liaison, what, what exactly that is on our side. So we can, so societies can be cleared what they're asking of us. We can be clear when we appoint someone to one of those roles, what that is. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Director Falk. Seeing no further hands? CEO, sorry.
I just wanted to give another perspective for everybody to ponder, and that is there seems that there's quite often a tendency that people want to be involved with all these extracurricular societies, organizations, activities, et cetera. And, and I think it would be wise to follow along what Directors Elliott and all have kind of commented on. Be careful for, we're cautious where and how many of these things you want to get involved with. A wise bureaucrat once told me that smaller local governments are usually targeted for these types of activities. Because within a smaller community, your figurehead persona kind of raises their height in the community. And vice versa, they expect bigger things from you being appointed to them to maybe further their ambitions along. But the biggest thing that he told me that I think really resonated was do you think all of the big city councils get appointed to all of the community league associations? Arts councils, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? No, because in a big city, there wouldn't be enough days or months in a, you know, in a year for them to actually attend all of those. And he says, that philosophy should actually rain down to small local governments. And he says, what you use instead are instruments like memorandums of understanding or agreements to fulfill those obligations. And I think we had an experience here where part of the fulfillment of those obligations wasn't being performed. And maybe we just have to tighten up that instrument. The other thing is, is you get involved in too many of these organizations and you're going to be burning the candle at both ends. And if you think that you might be able to appoint your alternate to attend these, then I think you are offside. Because I've heard of RDs who the directors actually right from the get, go right out of the gate. They appoint their alternates to this one, this one, and this one. Well, the legislation says your alternate stands in your place when you're absent. And if you can predetermine when you're absent, I think you are going offside with the legislation.
And this is a motion to postpone.
So that in mind, I think you guys should take into consideration when this comes back as to whether or not, A, if we've been invited, and B, if we have, then consider that if you want to get involved.
Thank you. So further discussion? We've already spoken on this item, Director Gisborne. We should move on.
Um, very short. Yeah, when it comes to big city governments or small local governments, I think we should always also be aware of the cost effectiveness between big city and small governments. And sometimes small local governments, we do things a little differently. Because, uh, the governments, big city governments, they've got a lot more staff and a lot more resources at their disposal. So, yeah. Different sized beast.
And all I can, if I add myself to the speakers list, say is that in Vancouver, there were portfolios. So that if you had the arts and culture portfolio, you were expected to go to those events that pertain and to those groups that pertain to that portfolio and likewise transportation or whatever. So that's how it was done there. Seeing no further hands, we'll vote on nine point one. All in favor of postponement? Any opposed? Postpone, postpone is carried. Nine point two, I'm going to suggest that we postpone this, but questions?
Um, I don't have a question about that. I just wanted, I had a question for my CEO, listening to one of his comments, and it had nothing to do with the debate or the vote, so I was waiting until it was over. But if, if you do know when you're going to be absent because you have a scheduled vacation or some such thing, then you do have knowledge, right? But so anyway.
Yes. Fair enough. So there are times that you know and times that you don't. Nine point two, I would entertain a motion to postpone this. Okay, Director Brander is seconding it. Director Gisborne, thank you. Speaking to postponing. This is a meeting tomorrow, which a number of directors, including myself, are attending with MOTI, in which this report will be raised as an agenda item and discussed. Which makes sense to postpone this till after that meeting. However, you know, given the MOTI's track record of maintenance on roads, we're seeing that it's no better with culverts. So I'm not sure what they're going to offer up at this meeting tomorrow, but nonetheless. So any other discussion on postponement? Seeing no hands, all in favor? Any opposed? Carry. And that's postponed until the May committee of the whole. So, uh, question period?
Uh, hello, Chair. Golinski from the Peak here. I don't have any questions for you this morning. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Paul. So that brings us to our closed session. And there is a motion before us. Director Gisborne?
I move that the committee move in. Cameron, the meeting be closed to the public on the grounds that the subject matter to be considered relates to matters covered by the Community Charter under section ninety-one, C labor relations or other employee relations, and consideration of whether a committee meeting should be closed under provision of this subsection or subsection two.
Thank you, seconded by Director Lennox. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, seconded by Director Lennox. Any discussion? All in favor?
All right, well, thank you for coming back to committee of the whole. There is no rising report, but our meeting is adjourned. Thanks very much.
Yeah, we're not allowed to rise.
Recording in progress. Recording stopped.
That's great. The color is lovely.
Okay.
...